Big little can.
In this place that we're going in there. It's there.
Yes, ma'am. It's six o'clock. Time to start our meeting, please, and we'll have the pledge by Ms. Willie and Ms. Jackie's gonna do the prayer for us. So if everybody'd stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and freedom of the heart.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. I thank you for this night and this commission. May Lord guide us, lead us to the way that you would have us to go. Lord, best to people that came. Let us do what's best for our city. Most of all, let us be an example for our city. These prayers are in your name. Amen.
Thank you, all ladies. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Cranberry.
Hello.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Mr. White.
Here.
Ms. Arthur.
Here.
Ms. Duncan.
Here.
All right, we've got two sets of minutes from the study session of July the 11th and the regular meeting on July the 16th. Once you've had an opportunity to review, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion we approve the study session from Tuesday or Thursday night and not closing commission from July 16th.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Complete your review of any unfinished business, and we have none. Awards, presentations, and appointments. We've got a great crowd here tonight for Mr. Nathan Bellamy. So Nathan, if you'd come forward and mission like to come forward.
All right. This is a great day. Whereas citizens of Mount Pleasant Tennessee are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city. Whereas Nathan Bellamy, a member of Boy Scout Group 154 in Mount Pleasant possesses those characters and is being recognized for his outstanding accomplishments in the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas Nathan has earned prestigious Eagle Scout rank. Congratulations. His Eagle Scout project consisted of rehabbing the basketball court at Air Mine Park. The work included building cracks, resurfacing, and painting new lines on the asphalt. There were also new nets and paint for the new poles and backboard. He also installed a ditch at the port filled out spectacular places to sit. He had several long work days in the heat of the summer and was overwhelmed by the outpouring of support that was shown by the community. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and its mayor and board of commissioners were going and honoring this outstanding individual for his accomplishments at this time. Now therefore, I Bill White, Mayor of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 20th, 2024 is Nathan Bellamy Day. All citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant, join with us to recognize Nathan for his achievements in the honor of earning the rank of Eagle Scout. I appreciate everybody that came to support me, to come me out with my Eagle Scout project. I really appreciate everybody that came. Thank you. Anybody that'd like to come on up and have photographs, maybe you'd love to have.
They're doing a great job over there, I want you to know.
We appreciate it.
Try to get out of the way, but I feel like I might have been freezing sitting on the side.
All right. Place sure looks a lot better.
Yes.
Monthly report from Mayor. We got music on the porch Saturday night. Local band Yonder Grove. It's at the Surrats, which is up on the north side of Main Street on the right. So it'll be a nice night. It's gonna be a little warm, so be prepared for that. I wish it. Shame we couldn't have it tonight, huh?
Yeah.
So next month I'm gonna report on some. We have got a lot of upcoming events now through the end of the year, particularly because of the bicentennial. Everybody make sure you got down October the 13th. We're gonna have a big celebration that day, 'cause that is the official day. But we've got a lot of events coming up that's leading up to this. So I'll have you report next month on it. Monthly financial budget report, please, ma'am.
We're still working on closing the books. The books are supposed to be closed by the end of August. So our goal is to have everything closed up, cleaned up and closed up for last fiscal year on the August 31st. Audit should be here in September. And then we're also closing the books. I will have the June 30th preliminary financials that we've done. They're not audited financials, but those will be something that I'll present to you all in the September meeting. The way we close the books and when we get the audit adjustments at the end of the year, then you will get the final presentation from the auditor somewhere between December and January. In the in the board summary report that I do for you all, you know, we really worked a lot this month on getting this agenda software up. So it is up and running. We've used it almost in all the meetings. This is one of our last. This is the last meeting for the month. So we've used it at every committee meeting, every commission meeting, every board has used it this month. So it's been, I think it's been pretty good. So we've got a little bit of run pains with it. We're trying to tweak it a little bit. Eventually, in the next couple of months, we're probably going to start using it for the voting section as well, which means every one of you will have an iPad in front of you that you would vote on instead of verbal votes. You would actually vote it, and the people will be able to see it on the screens instead of us trying to figure out, did you say yes? Did you just say no? Did you say pass? You will do a touchscreen, which will be your specific login that we will give you a username and password with. You would do that, and everybody will be able to see it. Michael's actually running it today, so you can actually see what it would look like. We draw a few items as we go through the agenda, especially resolutions and ordinances, you know, every item. And this will get recorded in the minutes automatically. So we're trying to streamline our meetings, and that way all of our committees involved and commissions are ran in a similar template instead of some meetings are doing certain things and others are not. So this will give us a little bit of a uniform platform. The other part of this that's really good is citizens can go to our website, and since there's quite a few people here today, you can actually go and watch the meeting videos, the agendas, the packets in one place. So you would go to the city's homepage and go to records, and under records, it's agendas and minutes, and it has everything on there. So all the meetings that we have had this month. I think Michael's gonna try to show us that right now.
He just said the the thirty.
Okay, yeah, he's gonna try to show you all how to get to it. Listening while we're talking. So he's running all this from his office right now. But you can go to the city's website, and you can just go to records, and under records, you will just go to agendas and minutes. And I know I emailed a little snapshot of everything to you all, so that way you all have a way to get to it easily. This is what it would look like in all of the videos or timestamp. If you just want to look at the video in a specific section, when you go to the details, like he did, you would just click on the item you want to watch and not have to watch the whole thing to get to it. So Michael's been timestamping everything as well. So hopefully this will make accessing our information after the meeting easier and more convenient for everybody. And the goal is to just be as transparent as we can with the citizens of Mount Pleasant. The funds, the governmental funds right now, since we just started reporting July, all the governmental funds are gonna run in deficit. That's where all of our taxes come in. That's where all of our state funds come in. We've only received one month of revenue, and that one month of revenue was really June's revenue. So we really haven't had a lot of revenue. This is around the time that we function off of the cash flow we have built up over the years, till we start getting property tax in. And then the enterprise funds are running in good because they run on a monthly basis. So their their revenue comes in every month, and we spend it every month. So they have a uniform revenue stream, while governmental funds have like property taxes, and they all come in at that point. You can see those funds in the in the lot. That's all I have. If you all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Shiper?
Nope.
Just appreciate what y'all done on this right here.
It's been a team effort. The whole building's been behind it.
It will be good.
All right.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor Michael, motion to approve the monthly financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Monthly report from City Manager, Philip.
Mayor Commissioners, mental people at points. I'll start with the downtown project. We're meeting every two weeks with contractors and engineering. A couple people recognize David Smith, Hayley Lee, Dale. It seems like that's almost a full-time job in itself. So it's all, it seems like every day there's some type of issue that we're running into and trying to address. So again, I'm going, I think we have a meeting this Thursday. So every two weeks. Building initial stages of air mine fashion project, trying to get a design concept and call. You know, the goal, hopefully 2024, but we'll see as far as come to permission. Had some complaints about Zion Road and the trucks turning right there, coming into town. So I have Chief Hay, he's doing, he's getting them passed doing a study in that area. You may see that in the next few months with the study and recommendations to do that. Operationally, Chief Hay's department is here to answer any questions you have. He is accepting applications for police officers. We did have one go to another position in Nashville. He's in interview process in-house for detective position, so that we work on before long. Our department's finishing up interviews for full-time and part-time. Finance is, has an open customer service position that's coming up for interviews. The back truck is here. I noticed email you guys pictures of that. They work Saturday picking some of the leaks and using, and they're using it every day. So I think it's a completely valuable asset.
It's a monster.
Yeah, it's a monster. So I emailed you guys, and we were watching one of the springs and looking, is it drought related or not? What a day with the back truck. They found a leak, and it was a leak, so it's repaired. It's back to normal. So not necessarily drought conditions, but we're still monitoring that. And lastly, Thursday, I will be at Public Entity Partners for any conference just for the day. Couple of topics that you guys know of. And that's all I have. Mayor.
Thank you, Philip. First month? That's right. We're in August. Why keep trying to keep this in July? I don't know why I'm trying to do that.
They run together.
Yeah. Maybe ever. Special reports from other departments. Wastewater?
Wastewater, you do have in your packet. I'll hit the highlights. Rainy Street, fire lines in Nashville, drawings, coordination, closing, probably documents or elements. Wastewater Treatment Plant, electrical wiring being pulled and terminated, modification going on at the lagoon, headworks and pump station. I think they finally settled the transformer issue, but there will be more to that to come. Waste model, wastewater model still ongoing. And then the sewer trunk line rehab, again, same thing, waiting for final inspection with the surcharge line and the wastewater plants.
Good deal. Gas?
Gas. I did meet, and I told you guys in the face, everything kind of looking at capital projects, volumes of gas, gas stations. Very broad meeting Friday with engineers and Zach, our gas provider, starting those conversations. So hopefully over the next few months, we're hearing more about gas.
Good. All right. New business. Resolution 2024-21, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant to participate in the Public Entity Partners Property Conservation Matching Grant Program. Cory?
So the purpose of this resolution is to accept the funds available under the Property Conservation Matching Grant Program through the Loss Control Department of Public Entity Partners. Y'all do this every year. This, the total funds is $8,000. The matching part is $4,000, and the money's gonna be used for cameras at all of your parks.
That is correct. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve Resolution 2024-21 as presented.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. Resolution 2024-22, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant to authorize the city to enter into a professional service agreement with civil and environmental consultants for water meter replacements. We have a nice presentation on this Thursday night, by the way, and Cory?
So the city wishes to replace water meters currently servicing residential and commercial customers to increase the accuracy of the water metering and increase the water revenue to accurately reflect the consumption. Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated will provide engineering services to facilitate the water meter replacement project. CEC provided a proposal for engineering services that'll be included, that was included in your packet and is an exhibit to this resolution. The total cost for the engineering is $70,000. CEC will not go over that amount without additional approval from the city. And the purpose of this resolution is to accept the engineering proposal and hire them to do the the engineering for this project.
Correct. Any questions, Cory? Hearing none. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept Resolution 2024-22 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a number of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-23, resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant to authorize the city to enter into a professional service agreement with CEC for improvements to the city's water treatment plant.
So the this one's similar to the last one. The city wishes to improve the city's water treatment plant as part of Phase One. The proposed improvements include infiltration of a third microfiltration process unit into the, sorry, wastewater treatment plant filtration system, replacing components of the existing filter units that are no longer used by the manufacturer or the MF system, and adding a neutralization system to treat backwash water with high chemical concentrations. The purpose of these improvements is to improve the filtration capacity of the treatment plant and improve the plant's effectiveness and efficiency during high turbidity events. CEC, which is again civil and environmental consultants, provided a proposal for engineering services that was included in your packet and is an exhibit to the resolution. The estimated engineering cost for this project is $215,000. The estimate is based off of the timing of the project, so it could fluctuate if it were to take longer than it should. The cost does not include the actual construction of the improvements or the purchases, but CEC will help the city bid out this project for construction. And the purpose of this resolution is also to accept the contract for engineering services.
Again, we had a very good presentation from our engineer on this Thursday night. He went into a lot of in-depth stuff on it, and it's something that's needed. So.
Is the water treatment plant? I was listening closely. I heard wastewater. So this is for the water.
Yeah, the next one's wastewater.
I think I wrote it both ways. That one's watered.
Yeah. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion we pass Resolution 2024-23 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-24, resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant to authorize the city to enter into a professional service agreement with Barge Design Solutions for Wastewater Treatment Plant Disinfection Improvements. Cory?
This one's also similar to the ones before. Here, the city wishes to improve the wastewater treatment plant by adding a new UV disinfection system. The purpose of the improvement is to increase the plant's disinfection capacity. The improvement was originally included in the wastewater treatment project but was removed when the bids for the newly designed treatment plant were in excess of the project budget. The city applied for and received part of the Murray County CDBG 2023 grant to add this improvement back to the project. So Barge provided a professional service agreement for the engineering, which was included in your packet and is an exhibit to the resolution. The lump sum engineering cost here is $115,300. The purpose of this resolution is to accept the professional service agreement with Barge.
Any questions for Cory? Hearing none. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept Resolution 2024-24 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-25, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant to accept the fiscal year 2023 Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
So the city previously submitted an application to FEMA for the fiscal year 2023 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. FEMA awarded $115,809.52 of federal funding to the city. This, there is a matching portion to the grant. The city is required to contribute matching funds equal to or greater than 5% of the federal award, or $5,970 for a total budget of $121,600. The grant and the matching funds will be used to purchase NSPA compliant head-to-toe structural personal protective equipment for firefighters. The award letter is included in your packet and is an exhibit to the resolution. Purpose of this resolution is to accept the grant and commit to providing the matching funds.
Any questions, Cory?
I think Philip has some sour grapes to add to this one as well.
Yep, that was the funny part. But it's good. We're getting everybody properly ready to go do their jobs. So gotta have them ready. They gotta tuck them when they gotta be there. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion we accept Resolution 2024-25 as presented.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Resolution 2024-26, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement for four police department vehicles and one fire department vehicle and related instruments and determining other matters in connection therewith. And Shiper provided us with a amortization schedule that you should have had at your table when you got here. So Cory?
This is a resolution you've done multiple times. This just authorizes the city to enter into leases for the four police vehicles and one fire vehicle. And like the mayor said, there's a draft of the amortization schedule in that packet.
Michael, Todd, anything y'all wanna add? Nope. All right. Hearing nothing else? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept Resolution 2024-26 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Approval of a two-week water leak survey. And boy, the first one paid off in a big way.
Mayor Commissioners, this is in front of you. It's well within the purchasing policy. But Shiper pointed out, anytime we spend more than $25,000 a year, we should have approval from you guys. They're actually back this week. As you said, the first two weeks identified 52 leaks. We've worked through about 20 of them, and eerily accurate is, I guess, the word to use for that. So still working through that. We'll see how the second one does. But my goal is to continue this until we have our hope system, and then on an annual basis, have them come back. There's been a pretty good process and a lot from them.
Philip and I attended a meeting last week with all of the water systems in the county. And something I found interesting after we had this done, CPWS does it every month. Remember Jonathan saying that? They have it done every single month. So, and they've got like, what, 12% loss? So, yeah, it's, it pays for itself in a big way. So understanding what Shiper needs us to do, entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the two-week water leak survey.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Beside grant approval of bids for 105 Broadway Street.
Mayor, I'll turn this over to Shiper. She's been deep with this one.
You all have the two bids that we received for this. This is the downtown. This is the downtown beside grant. We actually are a pass. It's a pass-through grant. Main Street actually applied for the grant. We are, because we are the city and they are non-profit, they have to run the grant through us. They awarded portions of the grant depending on the needs from the businesses in downtown area. They took all the proposals. All that was done through them. We just have to facilitate the funding, pass through the funds, pay for the bills, and then we get our reimbursement back. The two bids are in front of you, and because the grant was made out to the city, it has to follow the same purchasing rules that we have. So we had the bid opening last Thursday, and we propose that you all accept the lower bid. It was $33,485 with Vision Construction.
As a side note, Ms. Julie, who's the Benish Bay area of this for her business on Broadway, she called, didn't know she'd be able to get here, and she'll make sure y'all knows that she really appreciates the grant.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Were there any differences as far as the references and quality of the work at the two companies?
Not much, I don't think. But because the other one is the lower bid, the business chose that, wants to recommend that one because they have, the business has to match 25% because the 25% is the matching. They have to come up with that amount. So of course you don't want to go with a lower bid.
Got it.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we grant authority to authorize. Award the contract to Vision Construction.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Kate, call your memorandum of understanding. Cory?
So this is, this memorandum of understanding defines the terms of Ms. Courier's part-time employment and benefits. It establishes an end date for her working part-time as October 4th, 2024. It states that she will not work more than 20 hours a week and that her hourly rate will remain the same as it was during her time as city manager during this transitional period. At the end of the transitional period, she'll receive all the benefits and payments that were due to her upon separation from the city as a retiree. She will receive health insurance while she is employed by the city or on the city's payroll. So that's the only thing that's outside of the norm is that because she is staying on as a part-time employee, she would, to keep her from having a gap, she would remain on the city's insurance until she is off of the payroll.
Good. Any questions?
May I have a discussion, or at least maybe a discussion? And y'all might not think about it, but I know what Cory said, but I'm gonna throw this out here. And I thank Kate, first of all, for being our city manager, because it's been a while since we had one to last, right here. And that shows, shows a lot. And we can do whichever way, but I just wanted to throw this out here to the commission. And this is not a motion. I'm just letting you know. But if you'd like, like for it to be, I would. I would just like to give Kate Courier $62,000 to retire as our city manager and part-time employee with August 30th, being Kate's last day with the city of Mount Pleasant. Just throwing that out there.
Can I ask what your reasoning is on that?
I mean, ma'am, I don't know what your reasoning would be to keep Kate on for this much longer. Philip is ready to take our city forward, and I appreciate for what Kate is doing. But we keep taking this down the road, and people are gonna say, well, is Philip ready? And, and I want to be transparent, because when we say this, the way that we're doing it, we're not, we're not telling our citizens, you know, what kind of money is coming out of it. So I want to be sort of transparent and let them know what's going on. And that's my reason behind it.
Well, my reason that I wouldn't agree with you is that we have so many projects going on, and Philip is doing an amazing job, and I think everybody actually knows that. But, but one of the things we said when we first did this, when we first brought up the discussion of bringing on a new manager, was that Kate would stay involved so that there is no issues around, I didn't know that was going on, or I didn't know. He's doing a great job, but we're doing him a disservice and the city a disservice by not continuing with what we already said we were gonna do. That's just my opinion.
And I'd like to say one more thing, and I'm done. If you feel that way, and this board feels this way, Kate, you might not all step down. I'm just saying that. If this board feels that way, that we need to keep going with Kate, maybe Kate needs to stay on longer. I'm done. I'm done.
This, this memorandum of understanding is being done to memorialize this contract, and the very first number one says that it will be a part-time employee with no more than twenty hours per week. That doesn't mean she will work twenty hours a week, and she might not work an hour. This is, as Pam said, this is to take us forward because of all the projects we got, and if Phillip needs to pick up the phone and go, hey, what were we doing on this? This gives us this opportunity, and it's gonna be a lot less than sixty-two thousand dollars. You said you were through.
I, I'm not through, I'm gonna say one more thing, and this is on video tonight, so if the citizens of Mount Pleasantville like what you're doing and what this board is doing, they need to vote you back in. That's it.
All right, any other questions, comments? You can now entertain a motion to accept the MOU as presented.
I make a motion that we accept the MOU as presented, second.
Got a second? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Granberry.
Sir, I'm sorry.
Mr. Davis.
No.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Four zero?
Four one.
Four one, sorry.
Wait.
No, no, three, three.
Three, two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you. CT Consultants Work Change Order Number One in Downtown Revitalization Phase One.
So, Mayor Commissioners, you have the change order. This is for, the thing they're running to with this sewer is for thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars, and they also asked for fourteen counter-day, counter-days to add to the project. These are gonna happen a lot, I feel like, and this is just the first one, as we keep digging and finding things.
Yep. Yep. Found something within the last two, three days, again.
Probably the last two or three hours.
Yeah, probably. All right, any questions on that? Because of the size and its part of that, we need a motion on this, right?
I don't think on the agenda we, I don't think we have anything in place that says this.
Yeah, it changes the time and the money, so we have to see.
So we would need it, I guess, I just want to make sure.
And it's a written change order, that wasn't your packet.
Yes.
Right. Mike?
Only thing I got, I mean, we're staying within our grant money for all of this, correct? We're not gonna have to go outside.
This one though, without that.
So it have to come from the city?
Yes.
So, going further down the road, this could be a problem then, right? Because I was understanding that everything's gonna be done, it's gonna be grant money.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, especially not utilities.
Okay, go ahead.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
You can now entertain a motion.
Make a motion we accept CC Consultants' Work Order Change and authorize that change orders do not exceed twenty-five thousand. No.
Whoa, 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 you're on J.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thanks, and the Downtown Revitalization Phase One.
Okay, there we go. We have a motion, we have a second.
Thank you.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to two. Authority to authorize change orders not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars by the city manager.
So Mayor Commissioners, it's what we dig every day, and we feel like there's gonna be change orders along the way. Instead of getting into months in advance trying to get those change orders, what we're requesting is given authority through our purchasing policies to let me approve that, and then come to you with an email in the very next month for the official change order. We recommend twenty-five thousand or less when those happen.
Can you explain the situation that happened recently and why that's important?
So, recently, we were called there, and it appeared to be an septic tank system. After looking at it, it didn't have any way for water to flow out of it, but water was in one tank, could flow into the other. Our best guess, and it was right under the street, it was probably put in before we had the sewer system. So that ended up being, there'll be a change order, and they'll fill it up with concrete. As recent as the day, there was a sewer line, I think we worked through that one, but also with some of the other things that they found, there may be some pavement extra that comes along the way, so it, as this thing goes, I think there's gonna be a lot of unknowns.
And I want to add too, just that you just approved the thirteen thousand, we had said we put it on the agenda for September, and they said, well, we're gonna fill the hole back up and have to reopen it, so it's gonna cost you even more.
Yep.
So the ability to be able to react, which is already special purchasing, will help, and if it's larger than that, obviously that's bringing back. But just to clarify for everybody here, is the grant, not paper utilities, never was allowed to pay for utilities, but we all decided if we're gonna dig up the sidewalk on the street, we're gonna fix utilities and not for backup.
Do it once.
I didn't hear that.
I know, I, you know, go, go ahead.
I, I'm just going to add, the city did a borrowing in twenty twenty-one, I believe, twenty-one and twenty-two, the borrowing that was done, the intention of that borrowing was to provide the matching funds for this grant. So that debt was approved, which, if you do debt, that's not a grant money, that's, that's debt, we're making payments on it, so all of that was agreed upon at the time of application, when the TAP grant was applied for, because you have to show the state you have the matching funds to build, to get the grant awarded, and I, I don't know what the vote was on the borrowing funds or anything, but I do know that when we did the budget breakdown, at the time of approval for us to approve the bid, the bid came in at five-point-eight million dollars. That was just Adams Construction, that's not even our, that's not even the engineering, and then engineering on top of it, so that whole breakdown was presented in the special call meeting when we approved the bid, and I tried to, you know, give everybody a spreadsheet showing how much of it are we covering, and I can email you all that spreadsheet one more time, but that was a special call meeting that we had at the time we awarded the bid to Adams, because we had to get all that done, I think in a specific time period, so we call the special call meeting. That spreadsheet did show that the city's gonna provide twenty percent matching funds, plus anything that's not tap-legal, which is like Kate said, water, sewer, any utilities, because it's a TAP grant, it's for transportation, it's for landscaping, it's for those items that does not cover utilities. And of course, if there's any question, but I can email that spreadsheet out again that we had needed at the time that the bid was getting approved, so everybody was aware.
My question is that we're saying, you know, the approval for y'all, the limit is twenty-five thousand, and like, this one that came in today, but then if two come in back-to-back, or three come in a week, and they could end up being, yes, under twenty-five thousand for you to approve, but by the end of the week, we could be talking about a hundred thousand dollars.
So our purchasing policy right now allows the city manager to approve any purchases under twenty-five thousand dollars, but when we feel, when we see something like today, the leak survey, if, if it comes up over and over again, we bring it back to you, because we do feel like that the commission needs to approve it, because we get audited on every one of those change orders, they get pulled. Auditors are gonna look at all of it, and then that's where we have to show documentation that, yes, we took it back to our commissioners and got approval for it, and I think Phillip wanted to add something.
Yeah, so through that process, I would do my due diligence, talking to consultants or engineers with finance, and also emails to you guys if I'm not comfortable with it. I just know that what we went through so far, there are probably gonna be change orders, but as far as to say that I would just approve it, that's not how I operate, it would be through a well-thought-out engineering consulting process.
And I'm not saying that it wouldn't be thought out, and it wouldn't be well-thought-out, but what I'm saying is, if you all are saying we're running into these kind of events, what I'm saying is, you may have one this morning, and then this evening, you may hit another one, that's two right there, and then by tomorrow, you may hit another one. You approve to take care of each one of them, but then that's gonna add up, and when it all comes out, you know, we did talk about borrowing the money for the, for the engineer to make, that was gonna be the matching part of the grant. We still got an answer to the people of the city, what we did with this money, it's already been a question anyway.
But Ms. Granberry, if you're not comfortable with, with more than one, you could put a cap on it, you could say not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars per project, or per change order, or one per month, or two per month, or something like that, if you were, if you're wanting to make sure that he's gonna come back before y'all, before they approve two in a row, if that, I think that's what you're saying, the aggregate is what you're worried about, not one.
Right, because we don't know how many that it's gonna be.
Yeah, so you could put a limit on that, if you're not comfortable with that, if that would help.
Shipra, there's still a budget we have to save with that. There is. The state, the state has built contingency on their end for tap-legal and non-tap-legal, for tap-legal items, but non-tap-legal items is specifically what we have to fund, so anything that comes up with water and sewer, the state is not going to cover it, so we have to cover it, but like Cory stated, if you all are not comfortable with that, and you want to put another safeguard, I mean, that's why it's getting presented to you all today, we're not doing something that's, that's why we wanted to bring it to you all, because we have to give certain approvals. I think T-Dot has to be informed on every one of these as well, they have to approve every one of these. So to get the ball rolling, and get it to T-Dot, the whole project will be stopped till that's happened, so we were just trying, I think the goal of this is to try to do that and not hide anything, I think Phillip is doing weekly emails to you all and let you all know, if something of this nature comes up, he can always bring it to you all, and you can say, hey, don't do it yet, through email as well, and then you can come to a meeting, I would say that's, I don't, I don't know, I will leave it up to Cory.
Don't send emails altogether.
No.
Yeah.
Don't reply.
All right, I mean, we can't, we can't complain about what Phillip does, this is just, Phillip does a great job, we're very fortunate today. But when this all started, you know, I had people come to me, and I probably shouldn't even say this right here, but I will, and I told them, I said, our city is good with money, we're good, we're good, if we have to put some money into the streets, I'm okay with this right here downtown, and I came out with the number five hundred thousand to a million dollars, I'm okay with it, if that's what, but I'm just afraid we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get way over our heads if we're not careful. That's, that's the only problem I got.
So I think it's up to you guys, obviously, if you want to approve that or not, and do whatever, but I think the goal is, is not to hold, if there is an issue, not to hold out, it may cost us more money.
Yeah, it would cost us more money.
With that being said, hopefully we are in the middle of the utilities, because that's what they're doing now, and once they kind of work this way, maybe this, it gets back to streetscape and pavement and sidewalks, so I think we're in the, in the midst of what's under the road, and wow, look what's there, and we better address it.
Can I say, I would much rather be held accountable by the citizens of this city that we got the job done, than we, we do what's been done for the last hundred years, where we just fixed a little bit, well, we didn't want to spend any more money, and we covered it back with, with concrete.
You spend, you spend a lot of money, Pam, and you'll see how much the citizens of this.
Oh, it hadn't been a hun, it hadn't been a hundred years, we had several renovations downtown, and that's their complaints, that they hadn't seen from it, and now we got a big one that's showing up a lot and costing a lot.
I would still want to be the city, the citizens of the city to know that we made sure the job was done, and it was done correctly, and if we trust Phillip as our manager, as you just said we should, completely trust him, then we should trust that he and his staff are gonna inform us as each one of these come up, but they need to have the ability to get, make the, make the decisions on the fly so that we are covered, and we're not having to spend even more money. That's my.
Mm-hmm.
I just think that a couple of years ago, when we accepted this street project, we took on what was up under the pavement and all of that, so now that we here, we can't say, oh, we, we found this, we don't want to fix this because of too much money, we got the street dug up now, we already here, so we have to just fix it and go on, I agree with Phillip, we at the middle of it, let's fix what we found, and get back to the space at the sidewalks, you know, so I'm with, do what we gotta do, if it's tore up and it's open, let's fix it, cover it back up, and let's go on to the next project.
Mike?
I want to say one other thing, I said that one, go, Danny. Put no blame, whatever happens on the downtown revitalization on this man right here, he is not the blame, if this thing gets way out, I'm telling you right now, it's not, it's not the city manager's fault, it's our fault, and again, people that's watching tonight, they can decide what direction they want to go.
Any other comments?
Well, I just say as commissioners, we all voted to have this project, and we voted to have the street tore up, so we gotta keep moving.
There's a stopping point somewhere.
Not with the street dug up.
Not with the street dug up. And we all knew, and made it very clear when we got this started, I made the comment, and everybody agreed, that the minute we stuck the first bucket in the ground, we were gonna run into some things, and we knew it.
Yep.
We knew it very clearly, and we have a date that, in which they have to be completed with this project, and if they're not completed with that project by that date, it starts costing them money every day, and this enables us to keep them moving forward at the pace in which they need to, meet that contract deadline, as y'all were saying, to get this completed in a timely manner for the constituents of this community, so I'll entertain a motion to approve Kate.
Will we hit the on-site, I mean, Kate?
Kate.
Yes, I second. You said you make a motion?
I said I'd entertain it.
Oh, I thought you said you make them.
I'll be happy to.
No, that's. Authorized, authorized change order not to exceed twenty-five thousand by the city manager.
Second.
We got a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Granberry.
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes. Back to Ms. Granberry.
Ms. Granberry.
Are you, are you abstaining?
Hmm.
Okay, that's a no.
All right, motion carries three to.
Thank you. All right. Comments from citizens, Ms. Frierson? You'd come forward, please, state your name and your address. Yes, ma'am, please.
Hi, my name is Brenda Frierson at one thirteen Union Street here in Mount Pleasant. I came here last week to voice some concerns about some properties on Union, and was told that the planning person, Chris Brooks, would give me a call back. I didn't want to approach the board with these matters before I talked to somebody about my concerns, so I just basically want to make an appointment with Chris, or Phillip, whoever I need to talk to. Voice my concerns about some things that I think need to be improved, eliminated, whatever, it's three priorities that I'm concerned about, so that's, that's why I'm here.
Chris, would you please get with Ms. Frierson after this and see if you can't set something up?
I would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lori, come right on forward, please, ma'am. Well, you signed up to speak. Somebody signed for you.
She was, she was just saying she was present, I guess, that's what she did.
You signed your name?
Okay, you don't, don't have anything, Ms. Lori? Hey, hey. All right, that being all the business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, you're right, that's like, one thing, with all the construction going on, I mean, I'm breaking the law. When you come in on Glass Street, I mean, can we just put a cover over the sign down there, so I don't feel like I'm breaking the law?
The first day I came here, when that was closed, I drove all the way around the city twice, and I was like, I don't understand how I'm.
What am I supposed to do?
And I have one other question, I guess, you know, when I leave sometimes, I, I go back down to Jordan, down, was they redoing the warehouses down there? Yeah, boss, boss, and I know some of the warehouses down there, it's in a flood plain, and the garage doors are open up, I just, I was just curious about that. Are we held liable if somebody puts something in those buildings and it gets flooded out?
So I'm under the understanding, I can find out for you, that the property owner is just replacing, there's no operation going on there, and of course, that's just the plan, and it's done, and it's not approval.
But I mean, if there's, yeah, but if there's equipment in there, is the city gonna be, because that's a flood plain?
No.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
I have a letter that I forgot to bring, it's also on the same thing, I think it's two oh nine Olive Street, or two seven Olive Street, anyway, their concern is what is going in the building, and why the residents have not been notified of anything that was going down there, because they was, couldn't be touched, so. I went to the code board, code board told me that there had not been anything requested to go in there, and I need for somebody to find out, relate.
Going down Olive Street?
No, not Olive Street, the Wool Mill plant down there. Boswell, Wool Mill Boswell, down there with it.
I mean, I don't know, she's talking about the same building.
But I'm saying, they saying that it's remodeled, and it's been. But I'm saying, they saying that it's remodeled, and it's been remodeling stuff, and no one knows what's going in there, and there's a trucking company or something, and the truks down there already haven't been repaved in fifteen years.
I'll get with Chris tomorrow, and then on my weekly report, I'll send out.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. Might have been a great evening.